Michelle.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Ready for Christmas?
Just about.
Does Joey get excited yet or does he answer the shadow?
I don't think he really knows what's going on.
Yeah.
He likes the lights.
Probably the boxes.
Wrapping paper.
He said do what you want.
He told me to get back to him. He was on fourth or something, you know, two weeks or whatever. I didn't think that meant, you know, we usually wait a little.
Yeah.
So apparently I waited too long. So the third and fourth, or the fourth, third and fourth they booked. That's why I thought.
I wonder if they do their own, but I'll ask.
I found an old company. Did Jeff tell you? I found a company that we used like nine years ago.
Oh, really?
Based on the bills.
I want to see if someone can do it on the, also Fountains out, that was nice off in the river.
Oh.
That makes a big difference. But, okay.
I sent him, I was looking for something at the firehouse, so I was looking at the word fire and it came up. So I emailed him the name of the company and the address, but I didn't have a phone number, so I don't know if we don't use them because.
Oh, it's very well.
Switched. Yeah, I don't know. But I did, you know, just to try.
All right, okay. All right. Go on the meeting to order. Our last, is this our last meeting?
It is.
Of two thousand nineteen. Whoa. Should I go over all the people that have died in the past year? Get a whole list of one.
That's just not nice.
Come on, now, they're great people.
I know they are.
You know, Bill Buckner died.
Oh, really? That's right.
A memorable hero for the Boston people.
Yes.
And who else? Come on, boss tonight. What other sports figure? Huh?
Dave Ruth. Dave's got a lot of time.
Ando. You're not even. Not a Celtic fan?
Oh, I am. My, my brain is.
John Havlicek. Yeah.
Sound like a hockey player.
Hockey player?
I say you sound like a hockey player.
That's right, I did.
A couple of greats die, might probably know. I don't know. Let me, let me test your, your.
My head, my head is still, my head is still in failure.
It's the end of the year, Marie's not here. There we go.
You took the whole list?
Red Wings Hall of Famer. Terrible.
Terrible, terrible Hall of Famer.
Ted, Ted.
Ted Lindsay?
Ted Lindsay. Yeah, and also Ranger Hall of Famer.
I didn't think they had any.
Harry Howell.
I remember Harry Howell.
Familiar?
I remember Harry Howell. Slow but good defenseman.
King Kong Bundy.
Oh, right, that's right.
Great, Green Bay quarterback, come on.
Bart Starr.
Who?
Bart Starr.
Yes, very good, Michael, doing good. He gets money. Uh, Yankee pitcher and coach, and also the Mets for here. Mel Statamire. And another Hall of Famer, first black manager.
Frank Robinson.
Frank Robinson, here we go. We got, we got a tie. Okay, let's go to, one more, Michelle wants to go home, but it's okay.
That's okay, Michelle, you have.
You might kill any.
Musicians.
I'll take Curling for five hundred, babe.
Let's go, musicians, Peter Torque.
Oh, Monkey.
Monkey.
Oh, quick, come on, he was quickly done. Leon Redbone, not affiliate.
Doctor Monkey.
Doctor John. Rich Kasseck.
Rico Casey.
Okay, so.
Cars.
Cars, oh, we got it.
I forgot he died.
They're good. Robert Hunter.
Other writer.
These guys are tough enough. Easy one, Ginger Baker.
Green screen.
And, and, Any Money.
Evermore.
Actors.
Should have been on time.
Albert Finney, uh, let's see, Jen Michael Vincent, Beverly Owen, does anyone know who she is?
Too soon.
She played Marilyn Munster, come on. Peggy Lipton.
Mon Squirt.
Mon Squirt.
Trivial Pursuit, Doris Day, Tim Conway, Gloria Venderbell, Rip Toren, Diane Carroll, Danny Aiello, and Eddie, oh, we already said anybody, no. There we go.
Danny Aiello.
Oh, don't forget King Kong Bundy.
He's great.
You have mid-year financial report.
Nice segue, Dave.
Thank you. She doesn't think the heat's on now, it's all last year. Got it.
So, ending November thirtieth, we're six months through the year, so six, this report's six months back and six months forward. They're very rough projections. Some were calculated, like if it's a contract, I know what it's gonna be. Some other stuff, I could just imagine what it could be, um, doing my best with history and what I think some projects we have coming up the pipeline. So, I guess I'm gonna go through the highlighted, um, report that I wrote up, and then I'll do some other line items. So always keep in mind, their projections are not final, they could change. I also plan to redo the report again in three months, nine months through, which will be the beginning of budget season, so that'll help us plan for next year. Uh, right now, I'm projecting that we'll have more revenue than expenses by about a hundred thousand. It's due to a couple things. One is medical insurance. I always budget an eight to ten percent increase, because that was a trend for prior years. Medical premiums went down almost one percent. So they, they raised copays for the participants. Five dollars here, ten dollars there, fifty dollars on some other things. Um, so I guess that's covering more than anticipated, I don't know, I'm just surmising that. But for us, it's a benefit, so that's almost twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-nine thousand dollars there. State retirement, um, it's always on a lag by about two years. With having newer employees, they're in a newer tier, so the employee contributes more than the employer. Um, so we're seeing savings there, um, by probably about ten, eleven thousand dollars. A lot of, um, people have retired within the past two to three years that had higher salaries, so it's the change in salary plus the change in staff. Attorney bills, we just haven't really been spending as we had in the past few years. There's also no negotiations going on right now, no large general fund cases either. So I'm thinking we're gonna have twenty-eight thousand dollars there, unless something big comes up.
Negotiations are up this year before.
So if we start that, then we won't have as much savings, so this is good to discuss that, those types of things. Shared services, um, we had budgeted if we wanted to add an additional staff member for a couple hours a week. If we don't do that at all, that's a fifty-three hundred. Judgments and contingent account, those are emergency lines, we never touch them, so those two together are nine thousand. Workers' compensation, we've been favorable with our claims, so the premiums have gone down. Uh, six thousand there. So again, I anticipated a three or four percent increase, they went down. And then garbage, um, I thought that our contract was June to May, it's really November. Um, so the first few months of the year is at a lower rate than was budgeted for. Um, there are unanticipated expenses that I have included in the projections, so we don't have to worry about making sure that there's funding for them, um, and insured that. So that would be a prosecuting attorney starting in January, um, and if we wanted to, um, change any other departments, if we wanted to make change with the building inspector or not. Uh, highway salaries, you'll see that snow appears higher, um, but if you average out all of their various department sidewalks, storm drains, street cleaning, garbage, recycling, it all comes out to where it should be on track. Um, I've built in, uh, seven twenty-four hour days into my projections, so hopefully it doesn't snow more than that. But if it does, you know, there's, we'll find money, um, with some of the other anticipated savings. Building repairs, I've budgeted to include carpeting and flooring for upstairs, some painting on this floor. And lighting, if we wanted to do lighting for Village Hall outside. And then what other projects, is there any other projects that need to be done? Talked about maybe we have to look at the highway roof. Anything else? Steve, do you know, how's the highway roof doing?
Well, what we did helped, but we're gonna have to get somebody up there to do more, so I'm gonna have to give some estimates on that. But not the whole roof, just, uh, sections where the skylights are are just gonna have to be paneled solid or something. It wouldn't be a huge job.
Is there any other engineering that we're looking at doing for any big projects? Like we did the Garden Street engineering, we did some firehouse engineering.
Uh, no, not that I can think of right off.
Fish kill.
Yeah, we might hold on that. What about is the, uh, finishing up the water plant, the siding and stuff, was that?
Um, so any work to that building?
Oh, it goes through water.
It goes through water and sewer, but it also goes through, um, there's a little left on the van to finish that building.
Oh.
Greg and I had made sure that, because we knew it was coming eventually, that there was money to take care of that fourth wall or the doors. Village Hall, we did that, um.
The basements in this building, you, you've included the basement in this building, right?
Oh, yes. So there's still, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifteen. Um, we knew that we wanted to spend roughly two hundred thousand on doing repairs throughout the village. With some of the other savings, we can bump that number even more. Uh, we know there's talks about maybe looking at the wall on Main Street. So if there's anything else that needs to be done, you know, we anticipated that we're gonna have a big repair year. Also, um, as you read the report, you'll see if there's, it looks like there's savings from a grant, it's not a true savings, because then the revenue won't be realized, so it's a net zero impact. Um, so that's a police grant tab, chips, things like that. Um, does anybody have any questions on specific accounts, any thoughts?
I don't. Anyone?
Michelle answered my estimate from today's.
I've gotten some questions, um, earlier in the day and yesterday. One was tree removal. I projected that we'd spend extra twenty-five hundred in tree removal than what was budgeted for. Feel like with storms and stuff, we always have emergency tree removal, so I've built in some extra money for stuff like that. Um, I think we just had a last storm, we had two trees removed, legs, taking care of that hasn't been paid yet. Other than that, um.
Is that the emergen, is that emergency tree, is that coming from the, uh, tree advisory board's budget? Any tree removal?
Any tree removal, I put it through tree removal. But they usually use their budget for planned tree removal. Um, so I don't know, that's why I put in money, because I figured, I thought Jen had earmarked her two thousand for something else.
I don't know, might have taken some trees down that were in her, you know, that she was planning on taking down or what.
Okay. I'll talk to Jen about that and ask her that.
Michelle, Parks and Rec, um, we spent like a lot more than what we had budgeted, was that all the electricity and stuff?
Uh, which, are you looking at a specific line?
Two thousand and one, two zero zero one, Parks and Rec charges. It's on the last page. Am I looking at the wrong thing? I mean, let me try to get my lines straight here. Yeah, no, Parks and Rec charges, eight to the, we budgeted two thousand and we've spent, um, ten so far.
Parks and Rec?
Park and Rec charges, eighty zero zero two zero zero one.
That's revenue.
Is that revenue? Sorry, maybe I'm looking at revenue.
Last page.
Oh, yeah, you're looking at revenue.
Okay, you know, on second dot. I'm not, I'm not asking. I'm saying thank you very much, it works for me.
That would be, um, the various hops on the Hudson Festival and Putnam County Wine and Food Fest. She prepaid for a good chunk of next year's cost. So that's why that's so high.
So she prepaid, that's, that shows on this year's budget and doesn't go across?
Yeah, because we got, we received the check, the revenue now. I mean, I could defer the revenue if we wanted to.
Okay.
Uh, franchise agreement needs to be renegotiated.
What's that?
The franchise agreement with Cablevision, Alties, whoever does that, needs to be renegotiated, that's a good chunk of revenue that the village receives. I believe Jeff had sent emails to get on their calendar and they just are not super responsive.
Right, okay.
I think, I think, maybe the last one, Steve, Lynn, Mr.
Well, the, uh, firehouse floor.
Yep.
This, this part is completed, but we're, we're probably gonna end up having to level it, hire a company to come in and pour, pour leveling concrete over the top to still have an even surface in there. So it's not really all, all we've done yet or completed.
Do you have an estimate on that, guys?
I don't think we do, because we didn't know how, how, what they did, how good it was gonna turn out.
I think that Ralph, uh.
Gotta talk to the engineer.
Had gotten a estimate for putting that snap on type, snap, snap vinyl type flooring in.
Oh, okay.
And that was like ten grand.
Right.
But they're coming back and giving another estimate, so Royal was giving, royalty was giving them some estimates for that. But that wasn't really.
So that's just.
I didn't envision that happening anyway, so I think they're gonna have to spend some of their money.
Okay.
Along with, maybe a combination. The floor's not gonna sink anymore, that's what I was worried about.
Okay. Anything else?
Do not have anything else.
So then the last thing, um, the budget schedule, I know we're way ahead, um, just working backwards. A public hearing would be on April fourteenth. So preliminary budgets would be like the first or second, would be March. To the departments, so I'll work with other departments throughout most of February.
Do you, have you in the past, you discussed salaries, uh, with, with the department heads, or does that come up or not?
I don't usually.
Okay.
I can.
Well, we should, uh, yeah, touch base.
Okay.
Because we usually discuss that, but during our discussions like with Bundy, it's like if you want it, if you think that some, you should be getting more money or whatever.
An input, yeah.
Don't wait till we decide, you put your input in, why you should, why you think, you know, give some comparisons or whatever.
Well, that makes sense.
Kind of, so, but I didn't know if that was included, so, we should definitely be seen before me.
Ask the departments for it, no problem.
Public hearing is scheduled for April fourteenth?
It, most likely.
Okay.
Um, because it has to be done by the April, by April fifteenth, so I was just counting out Tuesdays of regularly scheduled readings, and that happens to be a meeting. Um, but as we get closer, we can set that, you know.
Mm-hmm. We're good.
Um, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, as always.
Yes, for coming up.
Yeah, thank you, all right, Paul.
Thank you.
Be very careful. Okay, uh, moving along here, we have.
Thanks, Michelle.
Discussion on temporary administrative person, person for Cold Spring Police Department. The only thing missing here, I don't see a, uh, an hourly rate.
Yeah, I didn't put that in. I figured I'd be, I figured I'd be here anyway, so. I'm looking at, um, for what has to be done and for the evidence that's upstairs and has to be taken care of, um, and for the, the, the civilian employee, which was employee of the Cold Spring Police Department, I was looking at thirty dollars an hour.
What's that?
I was looking at thirty dollars an hour, not to exceed sixty-four, sixty-four hours for one month. It'll, it might come in lower than that, but that's the ceiling I put in there.
So no greater than thirty?
Correct. Sixty-four hours max.
And you have that in your budget, you're good?
Yes.
I think thirty's high for what we're asking.
Yeah, me too.
That's very high. What were we paying, uh, that sub that we had for Michelle when she was out? Twenty.
Twenty-ish.
Two.
Something like that, yeah. I mean, like, that would start at around twenty, twenty, less than twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, dude. Do you want to, uh, we don't need to do this tonight, do we?
No.
Okay. All right, let's think about the hourly, hourly rate here. Some comparisons. We'll leave that for now. Approved hiring, part-time temporary help, uh, for the office, Tatiana Vidicovic, at twelve fifty an hour. Believe it's fifteen hours of week, uh, from period twelve, nineteen, nineteen to January nine, twenty.
Yeah, I spoke with Jeff on this today, basically, um, what he's looking to do is, is have her down the basement pulling the files. Since, since we did the big project with Carmel where they digitized all of our files, a lot of other files have been closed, so they need to be pulled, they need to be dig- digitized, which we can do here now, except for the massive drawings. So pull those out, get them organized, um, digitize them, get them fed back into the system. So that's what he's looking for her to do, it's like three weeks.
I would recommend we go with two weeks, solid weeks, twelve, twenty-three, nineteen to January, and to January third, two thousand twenty, it's two weeks.
That's holiday week, so.
What's that?
That's holiday week, so the office is closed.
Oh, sorry, do you have a calendar?
I do.
Right, good, that's it.
There we go, there's the schedule. So he's saying from the nineteenth, which is this week.
One, two, three, and we don't go back. Well, it doesn't matter.
This week, this week we're closed.
If it's a week, he's only gonna have.
Yeah, fifteen hours a week.
When, what are, what days are we closed?
I think Christmas and the twenty-sixth, I think, and also, uh, the first and the second. So fifteen hours a week for three weeks is about forty-five hours.
Then why don't we, why don't we do thirty hours?
We can do thirty hours.
Yeah.
In total.
So, uh, I'll make a, uh, motion to, uh, to hire temporary help for a maximum of thirty hours over the periods that, uh, Jeff had indicated, at a rate of twelve fifty an hour.
One second, ma'am.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, next is, uh, the loving Dave Marzola. The way, the way you signed your letter to it.
Have you, have you read it?
I did, yeah.
He meant that.
Really nice.
With love to you guys, yeah.
I love you, Dave Marzola.
That is how I edit it, I be glad.
It's nice.
You love you too.
Totally character. So, um, I printed up some packets here. I don't have as much love expressed in the packets, I'm.
Uh.
I forgot that I was doing that, but, uh.
Are there colors associated with each of us or?
Yes. The pink is for you.
Thank you.
So, um, I, I'll make it quick and simple, I'm sure you guys are aware of the Phillips Town Behavioral Health Hub, uh, with offices on Stone Street. I'm, uh, the, one of the co-chairs for the fundraising committee, and we are looking for a signature fundraising event. Of course, most of the fundraising events for charities these days involve a party where they give you a bunch of alcohol and ask you to give money, but that's not appropriate for us, so we're trying to find a signature event, and we came up with the idea of a charity five K, which we believe both promotes our mission and is something that happens early in the morning on a weekend where we can get the whole community out, so. Uh, real quick to go through the details, um, who the Phillips Town Behavioral Health, Health Hub, what, uh, charity five K and fun run. We hope to use the same course that the Turkey Tribe uses. Many of you guys have done that on Thanksgiving, it begins down at the band shelf, goes up through the village, actually all the way up into Nelsonville, and then back down through the school and returns to, uh, it used to originally end at the band shelf, but they decided that that wasn't fully five K, so they went that last block and ended right in front of, um, of the park there. So, um, Sunday, May seventeenth is the target date. I think May is a good month for this, because most people are still around, it's not that hot, uh, for health reasons, and it's not Mother's Day weekend or Memorial Day weekend, and we want to get a lot of families, and Little League's very popular on Saturday, so we are shooting for Sunday if possible. I've included a schedule of events, um, start early in the morning with registration, a nine o'clock five K start, uh, have some speakers while the, while the race is going, possibly, um, you know, some, some other entertainment. Uh, and then at ten o'clock, announce the winners, and at ten fifteen, do a fun run. Now, you look at the second page, I've printed out some maps here of what the course would be.
Wait, did it just backtrack a little?
Sure.
So we're having two races.
Well, the, the fun run would just be, uh, the two blocks around Lower Main Street, not going across the tracks. Uh, we're proposing two races, because we want seniors and we want children, and not everybody can do a five K that goes all the way up to the top of Nelsonville, and we want to be able to include everyone.
Got it.
So I know, um, I want my kids to run, and if you think I can get Gabe to run past nine D, no way. So, uh, it would be, um, we would start at nine o'clock with the five K and give parents the opportunity that want to run the five K to then also run the fun run with their kids afterwards, if possible. Uh, looking at a twenty-five dollar or by donation, if anyone wants to give less, or ideally more, for the five K, uh, for the fun run, uh, ten dollars, or if anyone wants to give more or indeed less, they'd be welcome.
Will Gabe be all right with that?
What's that?
Will Gabe be all right with that?
Gabe will be all right giving less, yes.
Still a thing for a kid.
I've, I've reached out to, uh, the mayor of Nelsonville, of course you'll see, it only really goes a block, it's in Nelsonville, but he has given support. And I have offered here that, uh, if I get your guys' approval, we'll also, uh, contact PBAC, the Police Department of Cold Spring. How the instance, I would like to go through Craigside Drive, uh, as they do for the Turkey Tribe, as well as the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff is, uh, has implied that if we get approval, he would assist with, um, assistance crossing nine D and three oh one. I haven't yet spoken to that, but, uh, ideally, we would get support for the three major highway crossings, which are nine D twice and three oh one once. So that basically sums it up. I, I, we're flexible on the date, if this date doesn't work for you, but I figured I might as well come with the date and, and see how you guys take to it. And of cour, of course, we'd invite you guys all to come and to be a part of this.
The, uh, where's the, uh, the, the speakers and stuff, or where are you gonna have that set up?
Well, that's a good question, so I didn't also, I, I, I did include in here that it would be nice to be able to have speakers and, well, I did have speakers, but we would try to set it up in the band shelf, I think that's a good place to, to make announcements, and we would try to start the race right in front of the band shelf, offer the awards from the band shelf, so people can get, come up and be cheered for. And, uh, I was also gonna add that I would like the idea of maybe having some live music in between the two races, if you guys think that would be appropriate, so everyone's not just standing around. Like, you know, I'm not married to it, and if it doesn't work for the village, we don't have to have it, but, you know, potentially see if we can get a band to volunteer to play from nine to ten. You know, to make it a little more fun for everyone.
Is this a rain or shine thing or?
This would be a rain or shine thing, yeah.
Is it gonna be strictly, other than the fun run, is the, the five K gonna be strictly a run or is it a run walk?
It is whatever you want to do, as a matter of fact, I'm a little disappointed Marie's not here, because I was gonna challenge her to a race in the fun run. I wanted to pick someone I thought I could beat, so.
You're surprised.
Disappointed she's not here, but, uh, we'll have to, you know.
We will tell her you think.
Please share that, I, I'm formally challenging her, I know the camera's on.
You may be surprised, she may beat you.
I think she might, I think she might. So, and if you have any questions, um, you know, I think it'd be a great, uh, community. you know, I think it'll be a great, uh, community event, and as much as we need to fundraise, we've done quite well, quite well this year. We have almost hit a hundred thousand in fundraising in our first six months. All, we haven't even had any grants come in, it's been all through private fundraising, so this is about fundraising, but it's also about awareness. And it's about mental health, and getting people to exercise and get out and run in the community with their fellow community members, I think, is a great way to promote mental health.
Well, my, my first thing always goes to Larry and, uh, and this, cause this means his staff.
I'm glad you're here, yeah, Larry.
And, and, uh, if you don't wanna commit tonight, and look at this, uh, it's always up to you, and maybe the crossing, instead of having police that we're paying for, we could pay for our crossing guards if they would so do, or we can maybe find volunteers for that, but as far as everything else goes, Larry?
Um, I just, if I can, uh, just wanna take a little bit to get my head around it.
Yes.
Just, uh, the Sunday's usually, the big, the biggest for us is closing Main Street down for, uh, church services and stuff like that. Obviously, if we're gonna close it for too quick, not the fun run will be south of, uh, it'll be down at Lower Main, which is fine.
Yeah.
Uh, the main, the other, uh, run would be how long it would take, and so you're gonna be going up and back, coming back down around Main Street.
But to answer that, uh, for the Turkey Tribe, they've never had to close Main Street, and that would be my hope.
Because that's a Thursday, it's also Thursday, it's during the week, it's very early and you're done by any time anybody coming in.
Yeah.
And, and I have a feeling, because, uh, uh, you're, you're gonna get a lot of people. I just have that feeling that more and more you're out there and, and people knowing what's going on, and the good job, the work that you guys are doing. It all depends. I mean, you could turn around and all of a sudden have five hundred people, then, then it's gonna, it's gonna throw a little, you know, curveball at me.
So, um, I'd be willing to meet with you and private to talk about this, and also I would say that, uh, you know, I think for, for the fun run, we might need to close off just those two lower blocks. And possibly when the race starts, the, the block from, you know, the, the.
Going towards the dock side. I, I would push you guys that way, depending on how many people you have.
Yeah.
So if you start right outside the Hut- the Hudson House, and the line of runners go back towards dock side, I think that's, that's the best bet there, and then take off from there.
And the only time I think it would be, uh, a really thick group of runners on Main Street would be when they come down from Lund Terrace before they go to Rock Street. But if that's right near the beginning, it should all be relatively, uh, at once.
Great, yeah.
So I, and I'd be more than happy to come down, meet with you and private, and take all of your concerns back to our board and, and see what they say.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
One thing you might check out is the, uh, the train schedule, and maybe these starts would be adjusted a little, because people are going down there during screaming down.
I didn't take that into account at all, I, I definitely.
Well, that, and also, that time of year, we get a lot of early folks, folks coming off the train to go hiking early in the day on Saturdays and Sundays, so.
And they're in the roads already, so.
They're in the roads, hopefully we'll be in the summer.
Are you planning to have any food vendors down there?
I didn't have that in my plans, I, I guess it's something to think about, uh.
I don't know, what do you think, we need them, it's only a couple of hours?
I don't think we need them. I mean, we certainly wanna set up a donation table for the hub, and, uh, you know, we're gonna try to get sponsors for this, and we wanna be able to, with your permission, hang a, a banner at the bandstand that acknowledges the contributions of the local sponsors we get.
It's growing.
It's growing, yeah.
Well, get everything that you want, and, uh, talk to Larry, and then come, come back, and, uh, you know, if Larry can wing it, I don't think anyone has a problem with it.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
The banner for the donors would be the day of the event, right?
The banner for the donors would just be there, up there, uh, at the bandstand for the day of the event, for the, for the run of the races, and I would take it down when the races draw over.
And I think music would be fine, too.
Yeah.
Alright.
So, uh, if I understand correctly, I, I should meet with Larry, see what his concerns are.
Yeah, we have to work out the schedule. Larry, I'm sure he has police to cover, uh, which is a big thing, and what we have to do on Sunday, and get the schedule down to, to the hours that work best, or book them again.
Yeah.
And then, uh, come back and, as long as Larry's with it, it's, you know.
Okay, great, yeah.
So you have our blessing contingent on Larry's.
Alright, awesome, thank you.
And Larry can be the bad guy.
And the community appreciates. So shall I just stick with Larry and not worry about the sheriffs, uh, since it's the village?
Well, you can work together.
We work together, right, so I just gotta chat.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much to the board.
Use them in Nelsonville.
What's that?
Use them in Nelsonville, though.
The Nelsonville Police?
No, use the sheriff in Nelsonville.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's right, there was that one crossing. Well, thank you to the board, but thank you, that is possibly.
Uh, let's see, uh, next, uh, New York State Park, so that's two reps here today, or well, not four. Uh, one, it's a discussion, New York Parks had approached, uh, requesting, uh, hook up to the, well, the first thought was Village Sewer, it's expanded to water now, uh, water rose, a big red flag, uh, uh, at our meeting last week, so. Um, Evan was gonna get back with me on that, and here you are, so, I'll ask you where we're at.
Yeah, so, um, I just, I'm Evan Thompson, I'm the park manager for Hudson Island State Park, also Fawnstock and Wonderland State Parks. Uh, just a little background, for the past few years, we've been trying to get the situation at Little Stony Point and Washburn Trail under control, with some help from town and Phillips Town and Sina Hudson, we were able to build a forty-six car parking lot that replaced that old mud hole that used to be the parking lot there. Uh, we got rid of parking on one side of the road, make it safer, so people can only park on, on, on the west side of the road now, only in certain areas. We, with the efforts of our park staff, basically, we rehabbed the old caretaker's cottage, turned it into a park office and visitor's center, which is very active. We have trail stewards at the Washburn Trailhead pretty much every weekend from April through November, um, to try and get people going in the right direction, make sure they're, have the right gear, uh, know, you know, know where they're going, have a water and all that. And also, Little Stony Point Citizens Association has, um, built a volunteer center, uh, right next to the park office, so we've kind of created a campus there. We have a presence now, we've been very active in trying to keep people from bringing, um, fire or garbage and things that create, uh, a problem for the park preserve down to Sandy Beach, we've been more active in enforcing, you know, swimming, cause it's a dangerous area. So all those things we've been doing to try and bring that area under control, the last piece of the puzzle is, we don't have bathrooms there. And, you know, we have a lot of people that come, um, we have porta potties, which are, you know, on Friday after they're cleaned, they're real nice, but by Sunday afternoon, they're kind of disgusting. It's, the trails are not only used by people from the city or, or people on the train, but they're also used by locals as well. I understand, I know that you guys have a bathroom situation here, where you really don't have, you know, you have this bathrooms down by the, um, by the train station, but they get overwhelmed, too. So we're hoping that that can take some of the pressure off of the village, also the business owners, who, you know, have to let people use their bathrooms, cause there's no place else to go. And it, also, it's gonna help protect the park preserve and, you know, people not going off in the bushes and using the bathrooms, or in the front lawn, wherever they go. So, um, we are in the very early stages of design, we don't have a design. Uh, we have kind of a concept of a small bathroom facility, it wouldn't be showers, all the, uh, everything would be low flow, toilets would be low flow, uh, the urinals would be waterless urinals. Uh, we don't feel, we don't have, I can't give you design numbers right now. But what we're looking for isn't okay for you guys to, to kind of let us go ahead and start designing something that we can bring back to you with more numbers. I mean, if it's right now, it's a hard no on the water, you know, that's, that's one thing. If it's, let's see what we have, you know, that would be helpful. There was, at one time, water that went to the caretaker's cottage, there's a water line. It broke at some point, I don't know the history of it, but for some reason, it wasn't fixed. We do have a well there now, the well doesn't have potable water, so if we were to use the well for bathrooms, we would have to create, uh, disinfection system, probably chlor- chlorination system. Um, and maybe other filtration, too, because we don't know what's in the water down there. Um, you know, it was an industrial site for a long time, so there could be chlorides, there could be all sorts of things in the water, we don't know. We're also in the process of testing that, so we're having a, a consultant come in, test the water, see what's there, see what the capacity of the well is, see if we even have enough capacity to service, um, bathrooms down there. But it wouldn't be, you know, a huge expensive thing, like I said, no showers. Um, we don't anticipate that it would be a huge amount of water. It's about seven hundred feet from the park office to, uh, Fair Street where the hydrant is. We would, of course, um, take on all the costs of the project, we wouldn't ask you for anything. What we're asking for is to be able to tie into the sewer and the water, um, so that we can provide the service not only to local people, but, but to the general public. And, um, that's pretty much the idea. Fred Martin is here, he's the president of Little Stony Point Citizens Association, I don't know if you wanna say a few things?
Thanks for the introduction. Uh, uh, as you know, we put up the volunteer center, our grand opening is on January first, eleven AM, first day hike. It'll be a lot of fun, there'll be a lot of families, a lot of local families, uh, and that's kind of our mission, um, to increase stewardship of the park by bringing in people who are most likely to be stewards, you know, who can come on any old time, uh, as members of the community to join in events. Uh, and one of the things we're looking at to do, you know, is have more events at the volunteer center to bring people in, whether it's arts, recreation, environmental education, partnering with Hal Day, it all stumbles on the bathroom situation. Uh, we do have a, an electric toilet there, which is kind of a stopgap, which is not for the public use, uh, part of the facility, but, uh, so again, what it came down to was, we can't use the septic at the moment, it, it's not rated for any more things, and it's, it's still, um, to get the best use out of the volunteer center, uh, we do need to have some type of facility, so. We're gonna apply for a grant, uh, a CFA grant to try to get this done, uh, on behalf of the park, cause that's our job. And, uh, we, we think that it'll be a great thing for this community, really, so, uh, and for the general public, of course. But, you know, in, in a lot of ways, what, you know, Evan and his team has done over the last few years was kind of take the park back from being overrun. And I know certain people had, uh, said, oh, it's not my park anymore, basically, they don't wanna go there with the garbage and all that, but they've taken care of that. I mean, and literally have made it a, a place for the community again. And our group is, again, trying to bring in more volunteers and stewardship of the park, um, to help, you know, Evan and his goals there, so. Uh, as a preserve, you know, you, you kind of wanna encourage people to use a proper facility, uh, and there was water there before, so I think engineering wise, it's probably gonna be not that hard, um, to kind of make that, uh, connection. But, uh, and if, uh, you have the numbers for the usage, maybe there, there is some way to work out to get both, but, uh, we'll leave that till we have the numbers.
So the water there was supplied from the village?
Yes.
Regular water line, but no septic, uh, no sewage going out?
No, there was no sewage, there was a septic there, yeah.
Oh, if you have any questions for me, of course, again.
Alright.
Have you considered, uh, composting toilets, like they have at the fountain preserve, does that not work there?
It's, the volume is the problem.
I see.
Composting toilets work up to a certain amount of people, and then they just become porta potties. And they have to be pumped out, so it's really, they're not effective, uh, for what they're designed for, if you have too much use.
Do you have a rough idea of how many people would be using it on a weekend?
I mean, yeah, probably a lot, but, um, it's.
Other than a lot?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I can give you numbers for how many people, you know, on a peak day, we have maybe fifteen hundred people come to the trailhead at Washburn. I don't know if all of those would be using the bathroom, I mean, we're thinking of maybe two urinals and two toilets on the men's side, and four toilets on the women's side, so that gives you an idea of how many toilets it would be. Uh, but we're not, that, like I said, we're not, we haven't, we don't have a design yet, we're applying for a grant to get a design. What we're looking for is an idea that we can move forward with this project, or not move forward with this project.
I, I think that, uh, volume is our problem also with the water, and, and, you know, it's, the, the peak season is during the summer, which we get obviously less rain, and that's usually when our capacity goes way down. And each year it gets, you know, it's, you know, seems, it's gonna be critical, I think, and when we have Butterfield online with all those new apartments, and you're adding, you know, I think whatever we add in, I think's gonna be, um, gonna be critical to know what we're taking in, or, you know. So I think, as far as the water goes, I wouldn't say it's a hard no, I, I, I think we really have concerns on that, and we'd need some type of, you know, uh, an estimate on, you know, obviously not everyone's gonna use them, but if you have five hundred or eight hundred people flushing a toilet, you know, twice a day, or whatever, that's gonna add up.
Right.
And so, that's, that's my concern. As the septic, um, it's, you know, we've talked about Greg in the past, and I talked to Matt, and we have the capacity for that, for sure. The only thing, I mean, if there was some way, you know, which would make sense is to get, you know, if the, you know, we'd have to put a meter, it would be metered for the water.
Of course, we would pay for the, the use of the water.
Right. But that would be, you know, a little late in the game to know, then, it'd be nice to know how much we use it in advance.
Right, of course, and that, that's something that I can ask our engineering staff to try and come up with an estimate of how many gallons a day, you know, cause I can give them figures from how many hikers we encounter, and they can figure out, you know, how, how many flushes per, uh, person would normally be, I don't know. But they would know.
That may wanna consider, uh, using the non-potable water for the toilets, and our supply is just for filling water bottles and stuff like that. So you're not using all those gallons to flush the sewage, and then you, you know.
We just have to deal with code, because code, technically, toilet water has to be potable.
Really?
Not yet, not that anybody.
Yeah, but you're New York State.
Well, true, that's our code, unfortunately, it's probably not your code. But, yeah, that's, that's.
I'm just trying to think a way around it, cause.
No, it's a good idea.
What David's saying, it, it's, that's a lot of water to, in a drought season, to, to tie up down there with thousands of people showing up every weekend.
Right.
That's a big piece of our supply.
Right.
And we already, last year, twice, were in a drought, or close, not drought, but we were down very low, uh, last summer, to, you know, to pretty scary levels.
If we do the hookup with, uh, this, you know, with the, the aqueduct and the, the New York City DEP, then that's gonna go on meters on, at their rates and stuff, so, um, that's gonna affect, I'm not sure how that'll affect everything, but we're gonna have less water from our, our reservoirs, that's for sure, one of them's gonna have to be drained, if that happens.
You're planning to do that if you have to repair the dams, is that?
We do have to, we do have to repair the dams, we're just waiting for the city to.
That would just be a temporary.
It'd be, for one year, we would definitely have to deal with.
It's a year temporary.
Cause they charge a lot more.
Like three times what we're paying. Uh, even with, uh, if you, you're talking about using low-flow toilets, but in my experience on low-flow toilets, you just flush them more.
People flush them more, yeah.
People flush them more because they don't flush properly, you know, or they don't flush, so, so the, you know, the average, uh, use of water is probably gonna be similar to if we had a regulars or, or close to it.
Well, I don't know, we don't have a meter on ours, do we have a meter on our visitors' thing?
I don't know.
Uh, it might be something, I'll see if we have a meter on that, that might be, and I do, too.
Useful information.
I think you would use more, for sure.
So, as far as the septic is concerned, is everybody?
The sewer was.
I think the sewer was fine, but.
That's not an issue. Um, it's just, if we bring back more numbers for the water, we might be able to do something.
Yeah, we have to get Matt into the loop, you know, to.
If you could find an engineer to give us some numbers, or, you know, like, not just that, pulling it out of the air.
Yeah, I would see, based on, on the amount, we have good numbers on how many people come, so.
Right, yeah.
Is that building gonna be open twelve, once a year, twenty-four seven?
The, the, uh, that's to be determined, but I mean, obviously, when it wouldn't be open, it wouldn't be getting a lot of people sent, so. You know, wintertime is not the problem.
The fewer trail moving ahead, that's gonna be one of the, probably the main stations on the trail, also.
Right, and that's, that's another aspect of, you know, if the fewer trail comes, where are people gonna go to bathroom, and if we can supplies that, that would make a big difference, I think, especially to the village.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
I'd love to say yes and help you on that one, but not gonna put the, uh, the residents in jeopardy with our water supply either. Anyway, thanks for all your work, I know you guys take your hands, so that's, uh. I don't know how you do it, or keep your patience, or maybe you don't, and I don't hear about it, but, uh, anyway. I appreciate it, thanks.
It's getting better all the time.
With that, yeah. Okay, we just got a couple of quick ones. Uh, the reason why the Independence Day celebrations on here is because the fire, the guy we usually work for, use for fireworks has already booked, um, so they booked up quick, this was two weeks ago or so. So, um, we have to either decide on a different date, uh, he could do it on the Sunday, which I don't think is a good idea. Michelle has the name of. Michelle has the name of one of the fireworks people that we used a long time ago. Jeff has that, I guess. And if anyone, I've asked Fran if she could contact West Point, maybe. Can you do that?
Oh, see if I can.
See if I can get anyone.
See if I can get anyone.
If anyone knows any fireworks people that, uh, we can contact. You're about to go to the Yellow Pages or whatever you go to. Anyway, like, we can, uh, I'll have to like, uh, get that group back together for Fourth of July and discuss that. Couple more things, uh, approval of bills.
Okay, I'd love to approve batch number fifty-three ninety-four for a total of forty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
I will second that. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess just one more thing, um, if, for any Metro North riders, uh, you might have noticed the elevator is out. So, I did, uh, get a call from Neil Zuckerman today. He was our rep and also from Metro North. Turns out that one of the elevators is not working properly and on closer examination, it was in dire need of repair and dangerous. So, they've taken it out of service and they're gonna have to redo the, I guess it sounds like the whole thing. And, uh, which is gonna take around four months. So, uh, people, uh, will be using stairs in the subway, uh, to get to the, to the proper side of the tracks for four months. Keep everyone posted on that. I don't know if there's any way that, that they can move that schedule ahead, but I'm sure knowing Metro North, they won't.
There's no option for someone who's disabled who needs to get across?
That was mine.
Right, because George, George Stevenson travels a couple of days a week into the city.
Um, the only thing is, uh, I mean, if you have an idea or I'll, I have to talk to, uh, to the rep from Metro North again. I can ask him what, about that. I don't remember.
Can you please mention that name again? The person who needs to get into the city who's disabled?
What's that?
There's somebody who's disabled who needs to be.
Well, I mean, there's more than just one. George Stevenson is a local person.
Troy Stevenson?
George.
That's kind of all I have for that.
Excuse me, Dave, did you, did they, did you mention a start date?
Um, no, I didn't. It's out of service right now.
I know that, but you said it's good to.
I didn't get a start date, no.
Okay.
I don't know if they have to have an engineer and go through all the red tape first. I'm sure they will. And maybe that's part of the form on, so I'll ask that. I'll ask that. Anything from the public? Questions?
I would just say as a local business owner, I think the bathrooms at Little Stone Point would be amazing. We have so many hike, the, the hikers trying to use the public bathrooms. Even on our second floor where the yoga studio is, people just come in all the time somehow. I think that, that toilet's like on some hiker block somewhere that it's there. But we, I'm constantly finding people just in the building using the bathroom without giving permission. So, I think that's an amazing idea.
Don't know how much it'll alleviate the town, so.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're gonna be going to executive session to discuss employment history of an individual, uh, which we will do, um, now. And, uh, when we come back out, we'll just adjourn. We won't be carrying on any further business. So, um, I'll make a motion to go to the executive session, discuss the employment history of an individual. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.